Well, and all that good stuff, we'll call to order in the roll call of Woodland Park Planning Commission in the meeting of May 14, 2015.
Starting with Chairman John DeVoe.
Here.
Vice Chairman Jeff Watson.
Here.
Ken Hartfield.
Here.
Jerry Penland.
Here.
Marty Probst.
Here.
Tom Rollinger.
Here.
Charles Schrader.
Correct, and I'm here.
Steve Stanner.
Would you all rise and join us for the pledge, please? We all had a chance to read the minutes from, are we working here? We're working. From March 26.
I would make a motion to approve.
Seconds. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Any corrections, changes? Don't hear any. All those in favor? Great.
Aye.
All those opposed? Same sign.
I'm going to recuse myself.
Abstain.
Not going to abstain, yes, thank you.
Do you want to introduce?
We can.
Let's you do that.
I'd like to, at this point, welcome Ken Hartfield to the Planning Commission. He was appointed last Thursday, and it's great to have him back. Ken served on the Planning Commission for about five years, which was maybe 2005 through 2010, and so it's great to have him back.
Thank you, Sally. Good to be here.
Thank you. Request in our public hearings, first item on the agenda, and I'll read this, is case sub 15-002, Top of Paradise amended master plan extension. Request for the city's review and approval of an extension of the Top of Paradise amended master plan to August 4, 2020. That is 198.5 acres and is planned for a maximum of 190 single-family homes. Top of Paradi-- okay. Top of Paradise amended master plan is located in a portion of the west one-half section 19T12SR68W of the Sixth Prime Meridian in the city of Woodland Park, Delaware County, Colorado, and generally located northeast of Thunder Ridge Drive and southeast Majestic Parkway, as requested by Andrea Rodriguez, Paradise Estates Incorporated, and Kenneth Bauer, President of Call of the Rockies Incorporated.
Thank you. This subdivision, the Top of Paradise, has been a work in progress for decades by Mr. Will Brown. Mr. Brown had a stroke at the end of December, and so now his daughter, Andrea Rodriguez, is carrying forward the property holdings. And so unfortunately, she could not be here tonight. They live in Phoenix. But a portion of this property is currently in the holdings of Mr. Ken Bauer, and Mr. Bauer is here this evening. I did want to start with the zoning map and share with you, give you a perspective of where this approximate 200 acres is located. It's outlined in green, and it starts up on the northern end near Forest Edge, and then abuts the school property. And then further south, this is a portion of this master plan that has been platted, final platted and preliminary platted. That is in the holdings of Park State Bank. And then the, as you further go down south toward King's Crown Road, that is where the property terminates. So it is all zoned suburban residential, and a master plan is required if a developer only preliminary plats a portion of his property, of which the first portion was platted with 56 acres. And then the balance of the property is required to be master planned to show how the roads and the lot layout would function. So the purpose of a master plan is really to make sure that the property is well thought out in the first phase of the preliminary plat. If it's adjacent, if there's unplatted property adjacent, then the master plan serves as a good planning tool to ensure that those roads and utilities function. And in your packet is the original master plan. It's called amended because there was an original master plan in 1999 that was done for this area. And then in 2005 is when Mr. Brown came forward with the preliminary plat for this central portion of the property, 56 acres. And currently, Mr. Bauer owns approximately 50 acres up on the northern side, adjacent to the school and Forest Edge. And then Andrea Rodriguez has control of the property toward the southern portion, down to King's Crown, and back up to the preliminary platted area. The preliminary plat basically supersedes the master plan, so that's why Park State Bank is not an applicant for this request to keep this master plan current. It's a fairly simple action this evening. With the master plan, they are approved for five-year periods. This has had a previous extension, so now staff believes that this is a reasonable request. There have been no changes to the city subdivision regulations that would affect the master plan, so therefore, we are recommending that this master plan be extended for another five years to August 4, 2020. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and Mr. Bauer is here also if you would like to ask him any questions.
Thank you. We'll then move on to the applicants.
I do have a question for Sally, if you don't mind. What's the status on the preliminary plat that has not been filed? Is that correct?
No, the preliminary plat was extended last year for another two years, so if they do not come in with a subdivision of a portion of the balance of the preliminary plat, then they'll be asking for another extension. So the preliminary plat is valid, and we'll see if there will be future development.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sally, I probably asked this question five years ago, but I can't remember the answer.
Okay.
So we have, oh, God. We, I think I asked the question five years ago, you know, why only five years? You know, can we go 10, or do we have to go five, and five, and five, and five?
It's a good idea to have a horizon, a reasonable horizon, so that it can get re-reviewed. If there were changes in the subdivision regulations in the interim, then it may apply to this master plan.
Thank you. Anybody else before I interrupt Sally again? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bauer, if you'd like to, you're listed as one of the two applicants, and you're the only one here. Is there anything you'd like to get up and say?
Not really. I didn't expect to be here, and when I made a loan to Will Brown six years ago, I never expected this, so anyway.
Fair enough. Any further questions of staff and the applicant? If not, at this point, we'll open up the public, we'll open up for public comment. Assuming that nobody has signed up, seeing none, we'll close the public comment. I don't think we need rebuttal from the applicant. Planning Commission, any final questions? If not, we'd be looking for a motion in a second.
I would make a motion to approve. Case number S U B 15-002.
We have a second?
Second.
Was that Jeff, second?
Jeff, second. We have a motion in a second. Would you call a question, please?
Beginning with Jeff Watson.
Yes.
Ken Hartfield.
Yes.
Jerry Penland.
Yes.
Marty Probst.
Yes.
Tom Rollinger.
Yes.
Charles Vader.
Yes.
Steve Stanner.
Yes.
Yes.
And John DeVoe, I'm sorry. I think I got back up in time.
Not a problem.
Thank you. This will move forward to the City Council agenda next Thursday, and that will be the final action for the extension.
Okay. Get here to the next one. All right, where's your book? Okay, case B, sub 15-003, Southwest Valley subdivision filing number one. Request for the city's review and approval of Southwest Valley subdivision filing number one, for the purpose of creating a single lot, final plat containing 1.83 acres, located at 1,000 and 1,050 County Road 231, also known as Southwest Street, situated in the northwest one-quarter of Section 25, Township 12, South Range 69, west of the Sixth Prime Meridian, city of Woodland Park, Delaware County, Colorado, as requested by Jay Baker, President of Material Management Company and Colorado Corporation.
Thank you. The Southwest Valley subdivision is a very simple subdivision for a single lot. It combines five parcels of land into one lot, and I'll begin with showing you the aerial of the subject property, which is outlined in yellow. It abuts County Road 231, or Southwest Street, and Highway 24 to the north. It is currently developed, and partially developed, not completed, but in August of 2013, the annexation and zoning ordinances were approved for Teller County Waste and Southwest Valley. There was a conditional use permit, a special use permit, and a site plan review that was also approved by City Council on November 6, 2014. And one of the requirements was to plat this property prior to a certificate of occupancy. Right now, the applicant is working on improving the site with hard surfacing, drainage improvements, buffering with walls and fencing, and doing a remodel on the existing cabin that is located on the site. The applicant for Teller County Waste, Jay Baker, owner, is planning to utilize the cabin for an office, and then the shop facility is for repair and maintenance. There is also a recycling drop-off center planned for this site as part of the special use permit. The zoning map shows the property down on the southwest portion of Woodland Park, and it is zoned community commercial. The existing conditions shows the photographs that I took today of the maintenance and repair shop, the future office building, then the contractor's services yard, which is located up above the maintenance shop, and then the access to the office. And you can also see in this photo that the applicant did begin to construct the wall and fence buffer system that isolates the yard in the northern portion of this property. This plat is a minor subdivision. I know you can't read all of this, but you had it in your packets. The front page typically contains, of course, the title and location of the plat. It contains the legal descriptions, and then the certifications, additional notes, and sign-offs by all the appropriate parties. The important part of the plat shows the exhibit as to how the five tracts are deeded, and their, these five parcels were acquired by Mr. Baker through the annexation process, and then as platted, that shows how the plat creates one single lot with easements around the perimeter. And there is also an existing easement that was platted through this property for access to the property immediately north of this property. That easement has been retained in the as-platted portion of this plat. Our subdivision regulations speak to a portion of how we look at a final plat, and then we also have design standards for subdivisions. Most of those criteria and standards refer to a major subdivision where you have multiple lots and roadways and extensions of utilities. This is a minor plat, single lot subdivision. So the plat information in our subdivision regulations stipulates all the criteria that goes on the plat. It is a technical list that a licensed surveyor is very familiar with and must follow those guidelines on a standard plat. The purpose of the subdivision regulations help guide how we evaluate a plat. This combines five parcels. Buffers are provided to mitigate impacts to the surrounding neighborhood. And then the site conditions for this plat, I've shown you, this is the site plan for the improvements to occur, and this site is suitable for subdivision and development. The drainage, grading, utilities, landscaping, access have all been addressed through not only the site plan process, but are maintained on the minor plat. The requirement for frontage to a public street has been met. There's nearly 200 feet of frontage, which will be used for access onto this public street. It is still a county road. It's not within the city's jurisdiction. However, there are water and sewer lines that are in this road that the applicant will be tapping into. The stormwater easement, there are no water courses through this property, no flood plains. However, there will be an onsite detention pond and water quality facility, and there are easements around the perimeter of the property that can also handle drainage if they are needed in the future, as well as utility easements. This has been, this plat has been reviewed by our Utilities Director, the Public Works Director, as well as our third-party surveyor who double-checks to ensure that the original surveyor has adequately captured the legal description and the courses and the closure of a subdivision. So with that, we recommend approval of the Southwest Valley subdivision, filing number one. That's a final plat to combine the five deeded parcels into one legal platted lot containing 1.83 acres. Be happy to answer any questions. Sally, on water quality, who monitors that? This is not potable water. This is storm water, and the detention pond is designed so that it infiltrates into the ground, which enhances the water quality in the groundwater. And it is not monitored directly on the site. Okay, so there's no chance of containment coming, or contamination coming down the hill from the upper part of the lot? Whatever runoff comes off the hard surface will go into this detention pond, and it is constructed with a filtration system so that it percolates into the ground, and that filters the water. Then that sand will be cleaned out after, on a maintenance routine, routine maintenance. Okay, thank you.
Sally, am I to understand this is a requirement? This action is a requirement of the council?
It is. It's a requirement to create a legally platted lot by combining these parcels, and it is required to be done prior to a certificate of occupancy for the remodel of the office. So the applicant is right on track to accomplish this requirement.
Sally, I was looking at the easement requirements, and what's considered the rear lot line?
For this property, we would have a rear lot line. Actually, it has almost two fronts, because the highway, whenever it's adjacent to a public right-of-way, we consider those potentially fronts, but of course, because of the elevation, that's not a front. The rear, I guess we could identify this as a rear lot line.
Why I ask is that, in reading through, you need 20-foot of easement. Splitting the property lines 10-on-10, unless there's not a deeded easement on the adjacent, or the rear property. And I didn't know if, the highway probably didn't have one, and I didn't know if the other rear property, it's unplatted, is that an issue?
It is not an issue. We're all very comfortable. I R E A reviewed it as well, with a 10-foot easement around the entire perimeter.
Is there dedicated easements on the adjoining properties?
The adjoining properties, I am not as familiar with.
That's county property, correct?
Excuse me?
It's in the county's jurisdiction?
It's in the county's jurisdiction, yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Sally, has the county made any improvements to 231 yet?
Not at this time. The applicant did remit to the county $40,000 to cover the impact costs of the trucks utilizing that road, but they, when we had met with Teller County Transportation Department, they will utilize those funds at the appropriate time when they feel it is necessary to overlay County Road 231.
Thank you. How is the waste in the recycling collection center contained? Is there, and that's a related question, is there any interaction between that waste and any kind of drainage?
First of all, the waste stays within the trash trucks. They either come back to the site empty after being dumped at the springs, or they are in the compactor.
Yeah, okay.
So we don't anticipate any problems. Thank you. The applicant's representative is here this evening, as well as the applicant. We have Mr. Baker, and then also Mr., excuse me?
Seibert.
Seibert, yes, Tim Seibert.
Says he's the applicant.
[laughing] He put down the paperwork.
Represent Mr. Baker. Either one of you gentlemen want to come up here and talk? Come at it. Just your name, you know, address, all that good stuff.
That's right, I'm not going to say much. Tim Seibert with N E S Incorporated, representing the owner, Mr. Jay Baker this evening. I don't have anything to add unless you have any specific questions of me this evening. Again, this is a fairly straightforward application as far as the subdivision is concerned. A lot of the heavy lifting we've already discussed, and continue to work on the requirements as set forth in the annexation agreement and other S U P terms and conditions. And I didn't give my address. You wanted me to give my address as well? Do I do that?
Why not?
All right. My address is 619 North Cascade Avenue, Colorado Springs, Colorado. Great, thank you.
We know you're local. Anybody else have any questions? We thank you. Any other questions at this time, either applicant or staff? We will now open up the public comment. Not seeing anybody in the public, we'll now close public comment. We'll pass rebuttal, and any final questions? Yeah, I assume, I'm sorry, I assume there were no public comments written, or phone calls or anything?
We did have two of the neighbors. One came in this morning and reviewed the application. The most immediate neighbor, I spoke with yesterday, they had no opposition to this. They were clarifying primarily the requirements in the C U P, and the progress being made by the applicant, or the owner.
Thank you. Sally, one of the concerns I'm sure the neighbors have in that area is that before the C O is granted, C O granted for that, all of the conditions in that that we had talked about, that will come back to us necessarily, but it'll be done with your department and Rick Circa probably, to make sure that all that stuff is in compliance.
That's correct.
And then as far as the maintenance on the filter system, that's probably, to me, the greatest chance of something going wrong, is that thing plugging up. Who checks on that? Do we check on that? You said there's a maintenance schedule. How is that maintained?
It is a private system, and the city is not, there's a program in stormwater that when a community reaches 10,000 people, then we do have responsibility, the city has responsibility for monitoring stormwater detention facilities. So at this point, it is up to the private property owner to monitor that. However, if we see that there are problems, we would definitely engage the owner.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, we entertain a motion.
Sumut. Case S U B 15-003, Southwest Valley subdivision, filing one. As discussed, I make a motion for approval.
Second. We have a motion in a second.
Beginning with Mr. Ken Hartfield.
Yes.
Jerry Penland.
Approved.
Marty Probst.
Yes.
Tom Rollinger.
Yes.
Charles Schrader.
Yes.
Steve Stanner.
Yes.
John DeVoe.
Yes.
And Jeff Watson.
Yes.
Thank you. This will move forward to the City Council agenda on June 4.
Mr. Baker, congratulations. It's been a long road. A long road. But if I only at this point, at least, we can hand it off to the next baton. Okay. Thank you. Chairman's report? I really don't have any. I really don't have any. Commissioner reports? If anyone want to talk about the traffic study, we'll, much of us went to that. Jerry, you were there?
Yeah, I was there. The main thing I heard was there's no funding that we're going to get on the outside. It was like, I think it was ten billion dollars worth of requirements in the next ten years in Colorado with two billion dollars worth of funding expected. Is, I think those were the numbers.
That's for this metropolitan district.
Okay, just the metropolitan.
Just the MPO, which is Colorado.
That's even worse. Yeah. So that's the main thing I heard. If we're going to do anything, we're going to do it on our own, probably. The other thing I heard is there's very little control that we have of Highway twenty-four, and it looks like even trying to change the speed limit is going to be a major problem. So it's very discouraging to me.
You knew we were in trouble when C D A didn't show up to the meeting.
Exactly. They had a Denver conflict and didn't make the meeting. That was not good.
But I think some positive things will come out of that.
Yes, and I'll be sending out the notes from that meeting. If you'd all like to see them, we can, I can copy that onto the Planning Commission as well. In fact, we're meeting tomorrow afternoon with a consultant to begin to put together the priority list and short-term, midterm, long-term potential projects.
I think there were some positive things that were brought out, in the sense that there's things we can do with our, within our own community that's within our jurisdiction. Pikes Peak Council Government offered some suggestions that they can, they can track license plate numbers with their cameras they've got out there and let us know how long it takes, a plate that enters into the intersection at, say, Walmart, and when it clears down here, and they can give us some studies and some information, but things like that came out of that meeting that I thought we'll, that we'll put out.
The way they redone those lights there at Walmart, that's helped. That's definitely helped.
Sequencing?
Yes, because they're red longer, and you actually are seeing people, all four sides stop before the next light goes, and I really think that that's going to help. And I mean, I'm back and forth with that light a lot, and I really see a difference.
Would help if they reduced the speed from fifty-five miles an hour, but they probably won't do that.
As discussed, it has to be warranted to reduce the speed, and they...
What do you mean warranted?
Well, they do a speed study, and you have to reach that eighty-five percent of the traffic going through is going slower than the speed limit, then it would warrant an adjustment to the speed limit.
Which means on the days we do, we should all run down there at about three miles.
We got forty-five miles an hour on sixty-seven north, you know, nowhere near. Well, it does have cross traffic, you know, people walking across the street, but here you got school kids crossing the road all the time.
Are there any plans to do the longer lights, what the rest of the lights going through? I believe they have changed them all. So there's a longer delay period. I would question the one at West, because it doesn't seem like that has changed at all.
What came out of that meeting was that when we have those horrendous backups on weekends, coming out of Divide, that eventually end up down the springs, there's no way to fix them. There's just way too many cars in a short period of time. It's going to bottleneck here, and it's going to bottleneck down, you know, start to probably cable wings for that mess, for that mess down there, and there's just no way to compensate for that. There's just too many cars.
Well, and I understand that. I mean, it's going to happen, but, you know, with having, having all the lights turn red and stay red before the next one goes green, I'm still seeing cars running the light at West, whereas at Walmart, it's really kind of stopped that running the red light, but they sure are at West. I'll check with our city engineer, Bill Ospak, if he's... Yeah, maybe have him check it, because I don't, I don't see that. I see they stop and we go. I don't see a delay in that.
Did they talk about the Karas intersection?
A little bit. We have a representative from Karas Bible College on the stakeholders group, and they did mention that they've made some changes in the timing and the sequencing.
Chris Seuss is the representative?
Yes.
I know friends of mine, there were residents out there complaining about it all the time. Backups at certain times of the day.
Certain times of the day, they start to learn when to avoid it.
State of Colorado, this explained to us by the Council of Government folks, he was very helpful, was that there's only so many lane miles there of highway in the state of Colorado. Colorado will not increase lane miles, so if you want to put a bypass through a town, you've got to take, in other words, we would, if they build a bypass around Woodland Park to mediate that traffic, we'd have to take over and maintain, plow, fix, whatever, the old part of twenty-four. And because it's part of the national highway system, because that's a federal highway, that throws a whole nother set of requirements in there to do all that. There are, what, only five corridors going west to the mountains, and it's either seventy or it's down to fifty, or it's us, and they're just not going to mess with a whole bunch of that, is what it blows down. We're a real small cog in the wheel, and we just got to find some ways around that to improve things for, maybe getting our folks home and different things like that, I don't know, because it's not going to come from the state.
Yeah, what they said was we could make, any kind of bypass that we built, we could make it a parkway as opposed to a bypass or a business bypass, and call it a parkway, and then we could have control of it. That may be a possibility.
Biggest problem with, with putting trucks on it, it's got to be built to federal highway standards.
Yeah.
And, 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 oh, boy, that's expensive. When you start putting lanes down, it'll handle overweight one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-pound vehicle or stuff like that.
And they also said if they do that, then there's a strong possibility they'll make that the Highway twenty-four, and then we have to take over the main street.
Exactly, yeah.
So if I'm understanding what you're saying is when Midland Station starts filling in, when the pool gets built, and whatever else is going to go over there, it's going to be the city's responsibility for the traffic flow coming in and out of that Midland Station? Is that what I'm understanding? Well, Woodland Station, the city is responsible for the build-out and the adequate circulation of traffic and vehicles through that area as it builds out, anyway. So if we have to put another light at center or wherever, that's going to be in our responsibility, that's going to be in our expense?
However, the system that's there now by, by the cowhand is going to be upgraded to a park system.
Right, the light. Park, pedestrian, cross.
And it's going to be, that's, that's going to take place. And C D A is going to do that.
They are. They'll be spending about a hundred thousand dollars on that. It's needed. Yes. People are going to get, somebody's going to get killed walking, because people don't stop at that point. So the stakeholders will get back together. We're targeting the end of July for that group to get back together. And then another public meeting in September. Community public meeting. These are all public meetings, so I don't want you to get the wrong idea.
Thank you. It just felt first, good to talk about that.
Yeah.
I mean, that was, that's kind of an important thing, the community. Here, Plan Directors report?
Oh, thank you. All I have to report is we have no cases for the May twenty-eighth meeting. It's possible that we'll be meeting on June eleventh, so if you can mark your calendar for that. And again, we'd like to welcome Ken Hartsfield back to the Planning Commission.
Sally, do you want these?
Sure, we'll collect those.
For council?
Anything else? Will we go to the order? Ken, welcome. Motion for adjournment?
Adjournment.
We're out of here.
Thank you.